It's nice to know.
Yeah, it was nice of him to teach me.
Are y'all ready?
All right.
I'll call this meeting order on Monday, June the 17th, 2019. Want to welcome everyone. I'll wish my granddaughter, Abigail Mize, her happy 16th birthday today. Be aware, she's already got a car. Light Honda, watch out for them. Very glad to have with us tonight Pastor Jeff Pennington from the Smyrna First Baptist Church, or later located at 1275 Church Street, who's going to give us our invocation and also lead us in the place to flag, so would everyone please rise?
Heavenly Father, we're just thankful, thankful to be together tonight for all that you're doing in our city, for the vibrancy that it brings and its placement and such an important part of the state. We just thank you for Smyrna and I thank you for every leader that's represented, for every person that makes up this wonderful place to live. And Lord, I just ask your blessing on everything that happens tonight. We just pray for wisdom. Lift these things before you in the name of Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jeff, and for those folks that don't know where the Smyrna First Baptist Church is, well, y'all have missed something because it's been here since they brought the dirt in. They're right up here, they're one of the largest churches, and I know they do a great job, not only in the ministry but for our community. Jeff, we thank you for all you do for our city. Agenda changes. The only agenda change we have is that when we get down to item 4A under land issues, zonings and annexation, that item has been withdrawn. The mayor will report. I don't really have anything tonight, so we'll move on into land issues. Oh, I'm sorry about these glasses, too. These is the only thing they had at Dollar Tree that worked, so these are sort of pinkish-red, but they do good, so.
They're working for you.
They look all right. Item 4 is land issues, zonings and annexation. A is 2019-168, public hearings on request, Z19-010, rezoning from R20 to R15 conditional for three single-family homes at a density of 2.93 units per acre, 1.0245 acres landlot 466 at 990 Pebblebrook Road Palladium Land LLC. I'm going to ask that Mr. Fennel table, no, just accept that this has been withdrawn.
Mr. Mayor, at the request of the applicant, I ask that we withdraw the request, item 2019-168 unanimously.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Anybody vote? That's approved 6-0. And just for the record, Councilmember Susan Wilkinson is not here tonight, she had a death in the family, and I think the funeral was this afternoon, so we, sorry that she's not here. Item 4B under land issue zoning and annexation, excuse me, 2019-94, sorry, public hearing zoning request. Ms. Jones, please read that.
Zoning request Z19005 rezoning from R15 to R10 conditional for four single-family homes at a density of 3.72 units per acre, 1.7 acres, landlot 561, 1420 and 1430 Roswell Street, M. Younger Homes LLC. And because this item was tabled, I'm actually going to go on and turn it over to our acting Community Development Director Rusty Martin to give you the background.
And Rusty, before you do that, and I know there's a lot of people that are here for that issue, I think that there's been a resolution, I think, that's from what I understand, that Rusty will bring forward, that it's going to be okay for everybody. So after he makes his presentation, I will ask if anybody wants to make any public comment, this is an item that was tabled, I think this is the second or third time, but anybody that wants to speak, I'll give them that permission after Rusty makes his presentation. Mr. Rusty Martin, if there is one here.
All right, good evening. I'm not going to rehash the whole issue, I'm just going to go over the revisions to the staff memo based on our discussion regarding a possible resolution for this issue. I have the staff memo up. We modified several conditions within the staff memo, the first being we eliminated stipulation number 15, which required a five-foot sidewalk and two-foot grass buffer. We left in the stipulation that required a five-foot right-of-way dedication, so the wall will become the responsibility of the city once that right-of-way is dedicated. As we go down, we added two additional stipulations, the first one being number 23. The location of the shared driveway shall be relocated south of the proposed location on the submitted site plan to preserve as much of the wall as possible. The location of the shared driveway shall be reviewed and approved by the city engineer. If the new location of the shared driveway requires a removal of a portion of the wall, the developer shall be permitted to remove the said portion to provide adequate clearance and sightline along Roswell Street. Number 24 was added. The individual home shall provide access to the public sidewalk. If the existing wall should preclude access to the public sidewalk, the developer shall be allowed to provide access through the wall if need be. The access through the wall shall be reviewed and approved by the city engineer. And then 25 ties the approval of the zoning to the site plan, and then we added the last portion of the last sentence to tie it to all the stipulations stated above. I think this is an adequate resolution for the community, for the developer, to preserve as much of the wall as possible, as well as get the improvements that are necessary when the city does the improvements along Roswell Street. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So Rusty, this in essence gives the wall to the city?
Yes.
And the city would have, we would maintain it, I guess, forever, so when somebody comes in out of the four houses, they will know who the wall belongs to, and it'll be in front of their houses. Is that correct?
Yes, after the dedication of the property to the city, the wall will be the responsibility of the city. If the applicants or the property owners that butt up to the wall want to do anything to the wall, they'd have to make an application to the city or request to do that, but they wouldn't have by right the opportunity to do that on their own.
Anyone have any other, any questions of Rusty? What I want to make clear is that they will know when they purchase that house, that what the deal is with the wall.
They should receive a survey of their property at closing, so they know where the wall is and where their property line begins.
Now, let me say this, this is a public hearing, I know that the applicant is here. Is there anyone, excuse me, that would like to make any public comment concerning this? If you do, please step forward, and we can go ahead and get Mr. Ungar up here. Anyone that thinks they want to make a comment, I hope this is resolved to the satisfaction of everybody, so. If you folks have a seat, Mr. Ungar, I'll turn this over to Ms. Blackman.
Thank you so much, Mayor. And we've heard from Rusty, and as the mayor shared, I do hope, or I believe that we have come to a resolution, and I'm excited about that. So with that, I will ask-
Listen, Matt, can-
Matt can come forward.
Matt, sit down real quick. I guess, have you seen these changes?
Yeah, it sounds like it'll work for me, so. I guess, one of the things, I guess we're just going to move the driveway up the hill a little bit, so it goes between the first and second house, and that should avoid, you know, any major impact to the wall. And, yeah, I mean, I'm not sure what else to say, but.
Yes, thank you, Matt.
We'll hear from those that were sworn in. Step forward, tell us who you are and any comment that you'd like to make.
I'm Ron Davis, I live on Roswell Street in Smyrna. When I spoke to this issue at the last council meeting, I basically said that if we could preserve this wall, that it would be a win for everybody. And I won't go over why it's a win, I think we all understand now, as much as we've discussed it, why it's extremely important to the neighborhood. And I'm here tonight after talking with Rusty and others, I sense that, and I'm not trying to be presumptuous, but I sense that we're going to get a vote tonight that will save the wall. And having said that, I would like to thank the mayor and the council for working hard on this issue and making it happen. I know that back a couple months ago, it might have felt like to you that let's just discard it because it's too complicated and there are too many details to sort out, but you stuck with it, and hopefully we'll have a good solution tonight. Again, thank you very much, I salute you all.
Hello, my name is Sean Martin, and having worked with you guys on the Johnacle City Historical Trail, I would so like to recommend that the wall be given a marker, as well as a potential plaque or some indicator on the wall, so that when people are passing by, they'll know why that wall is so special. And with that being said, congratulations.
And just your address, where you live, we always like to-
Yes, sure, it's 2884 Anderson Circle.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Ms. Blackman.
Thank you, Mayor. This has been a long time coming, and I'm so glad that we are at this point in time, and I'm looking at Matt over there, and Matt's like, man, can we just get it over with, right? And we are at that point. I just want to say to the Williams Park community, thank you all for being so cooperative, so patient. Thank many of you for talking hours with me, even standing on the street corner to look at the wall and share your stories about how important it is. So the more and more I walk in that area and see that wall, it is very important to me, and it's very important to the community. And for anybody that comes to Smyrna to know that that is a part of what I'm going to say history for Smyrna, so thank you guys for standing up, and thank you, Matt, for your willingness to work with the community, because we're all in this together, we can't do it by ourselves, so I'm glad we're able to work together. And also, Ms. Martin just shared that some type of a plaque, I think as we were talking about the wall in our last meeting, I basically said it's the Cochrane Wall, if I'm correct, so, and hopefully we'll get the type of signage on there so that people will know that that wall has a name, the Cochrane Wall. So with that, I am going to ask for approval of item 4B, 2019, zoning request, Z19-005, rezoning from R-15 to R10 conditional for four single-family homes at a density of 3.72 units per acre, 1.17 acres, landlot 561-1420 and 1430 Roswell Street, as amended with the stipulations, and Matt Younger Homes is our builder.
And motion and second, to approve this with the changes noted by our acting Community Development Director. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor of the motion? That's approved 6-0, thank you very much. Item 4C. Excuse me, I'm sort of choked up about this. I don't know where Keith Bentley is. Probably what I'm choked up about. Okay. Item 4, I'm sorry, 4C, land issue zoning and annexation, 2019-170, public hearing, zoning request, Z19-009, rezoning from LI to MU for the use of the property as residence and an antique restoration business, 1.22 acres, landlot 492, 2201 Dixie Avenue, Gordon and Deanna Brands, B-R-A-N-S, Brands, is that correct? The background, please, Ms. Demis Adlerjow.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, everyone. Gordon and Deanie Brands are requesting rezoning from LI, Light Industrial, to MU, conditional, mixed use, for the use of the property as a single-family residence and a antique restoration business. The applicants are currently operating their antique restoration business from the accessory building at the rear of the property, with the existing residence being vacant. The applicants are requesting to renovate the residence into a new home for themselves. The planning and zoning board heard the zoning request at the May 13th, 2019 meeting, and made a vote in favor by a vote of seven to zero. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning with conditions, and I'll turn it over to Rusty Martin again.
All right, is the applicant, I think they're here, if y'all please step forward. Is there, this is a public hearing, is anyone here that's in opposition to, that would like to make any public comment concerning this zoning request? All right, Scott, go and swear them in, and then. A few folks will have a seat, we'll let Rusty Martin give us the background, and Matt, your thing passed, you know that, don't you? I just wondered why you're still here. You can't get more than a 6-0 vote tonight. Okay, thanks. No, you can stay, I'm just kidding with you. Rusty?
Yep, this rezoning request went to the P&amp;Z Board back in May. They made a recommendation for approval of the zoning change from LI to MU by a vote of seven-zero. The subject property is located 2201 Dixie Avenue, this is on the north end, just past Wendy Hill on Dixie Avenue. The property has existing zoning designation of LI, which is Light Industrial. Currently on site, there's an abandoned residence, and then there is an accessory structure in the back that the property owner and applicant operate an antique restoration business out of. Their request is to rezone this property from Light Industrial to Mixed Use, so that they could renovate the existing residence on site and turn it into a functional residence and rehab it and do a small addition to it and restore the rest of the building. And to be able to have a residence and a commercial business on the same property, we needed to rezone the property to Mixed Use to allow that. The city's future land use map has a designation of industrial mixed use, that will not change with this request. That designation allows for industrial and residential uses together, sort of to make makers' spots and studios and stuff like that. This falls in within that, we just haven't gotten to the point of making the industrial mixed use zoning category to be able to accommodate this, so the Mixed Use is the next best thing to do that. If you look to the northeast and south, in Cobb County, that property is owned heavy industrial, and then to the west, it's heavy industrial and community activity center. Here is the proposed site plan. The residence is fronting on Dixie Avenue, and then the restoration building business is run out of the accessory building in the back. This is the existing gravel area, this is where their patrons park, and they maneuver around through the site. They have an access off of Dixie Avenue and then one off of Davis Road. For this request, the Mixed Use zoning classification has the following setbacks, a front setback of zero, a side setback of zero, and a rear setback of 20. The proposed changes meet those requirements, so there's no variances necessary for the setbacks. They are requesting two other variances with this request, and the first is to replace the existing fence along Dixie Avenue. They're proposing to increase the fence height from four feet to six feet, and they'll have aluminum or wrought iron looking fence with brick columns, and that's for security reasons. And then they're seeking a variance to keep the gravel surface for the parking for the commercial business. This is the picture of what they propose to do to the building, so they want to keep the historical nature of the building. They will be adding on an addition on the back of the property. And then, these are pictures of the subject property, so you can see what's going on. And then, these are adjacent properties, so they back up to an automobile repair shop, and then there's several residents around, and then they have train tracks, the CSX Railroad, across Dixie Avenue, and then some commercial property across Atlanta Road. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning with the standard conditions from 1201, and then some special conditions. Number seven deals with the setbacks, number eight deals with fire access requirements, number nine requires the applicant to be responsible for water and sewer improvements, number 10 requires a 10-foot right-of-way dedication along both Davis and Dixie. 11 is allowing them to continue using the gravel parking area. 12 is the approval for the six-foot iron or wood fence along Dixie and Davis. 13 ties the zoning to the site plan, and 14 ties the zoning to the building elevations. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
Questions, Mr. Martin? Thank you, Rusty. Applicants, please step forward.
Good evening, council, Mayor. The structure was built in 1850.
1850?
Eighteen.
Oh, eighteen.
It's actually listed at the museum, Smyrna Museum, there's some information there that they have on record.
And just for the record, we know who you, I think you are, Gordon and Deanne's-
Deanie.
Deanie Brands, right?
Correct.
Okay. You've got a great radio voice.
I've been told that.
Yeah.
I'm going to go down to the game tonight and take over Skip's-
I wouldn't say it's that good, but it's just pretty good.
Bought the property two years ago, have actually an architectural restoration business that we worked out of the back and the front, we want to preserve the house structurally, we're going to try to keep it original as far as the foundation, but when it's on eight-by-eight timbers or on stacked stone with no mortar, it's kind of precarious, so I had an engineer look at it, he said it's possible, but it's going to be costly, so after really getting into it more and looking at it, we decided we would, instead of just raising the house up because a lot of stuff's out of code, I've been talking to the building department to meet current codes, you know, I think the best thing is to disassemble it, put in a two-code foundation exactly where it's at now, with the additions on the back, and try to reuse as much as the materials on the interior as possible. There's, you know, hand-hewn beams that we want to put in the ceilings for cosmetic look, and just kind of keep the originality of it. Had the porch in the front, reused the chimneys, I've already resupplied one of them that was built probably in 1890. They're not working, I've already talked to the building guys, they're going to be just closed off and capped off, but they're still the cosmetic aura of the brick. But, yeah, that's our goal, and make it a nice streetscape, the whole area was been, you said rezoned, or the planned use was Arch and Crafts kind of district, and that kind of falls in with the restoration business of the architectural stuff, you know, old mantles and lighting and doors anywhere from like 1800 to 1930. So, and had a good turnout, actually Len just left, he was there the week we opened, he'd been there the first week, so. We're just asking for approval to keep the house where it's at, on the same footprint, but rebuild it structurally to meet all current building codes. Any more questions, or anybody?
I have a question.
Sure.
This is an eyewitness account, I don't know if it's true, you have to back me up on this. Former Mayor Harold Smith said it was kind of cloudy that day when Sherman was there and somebody took a shot at him.
That's what we were told, yeah, we were told that the hat's in the Smithsonian, it's got a bullet hole through it, I got a picture from the museum, they gave it to me. So it's, I mean, you know.
I appreciate you working to save and continue the life of this house, it's important to have structures like that still around so we can tell these stories, but thank you for the work you do for those folks who do restoration work, it's an important thing.
Well, I do that as a living, and we're going to do this as a personal project.
It's exciting.
You know, we haven't found any old, you know, gold in the basement or anything, or bones or anything, but there is some handwriting on the wall that's kind of cool, we're going to preserve that and frame it out.
Told Harold not to do that, but okay.
Hi, is the, you said this property or the house was built in 1850?
That's what we were told, 55, somewhere in there.
Do you know if it's on the historical registry?
No, it's not.
Okay, but you are going to try to preserve as much of that as you can?
The material is, there's columns, if you look on the elevation, there's some fluted columns with some corintine caps, we're going to reuse those on the porch. A lot of the interior walls are all beadboard, hard pine, we're going to reuse that, we're going to put some beams, I mean, actually the ceiling joist are charred members that they reused when the house was rebuilt in 1865, I was told, because it was burned, rebuilt, and then added on to the 1890s, but, yeah, plus some kind of hosh-posh add-ons that didn't go with the house that have kind of dilapidated.
Did I see a wraparound porch or something?
It's a front porch.
A front porch?
Right.
Goes around on it?
Right.
Okay.
So the elevation's going to be original on the front, so what you saw in the photograph, we're going to keep that, and probably make the roof a little bit steeper because the roof's way out of code. I mean, I'm familiar with construction, but a two-by-four can't span 22 feet.
Right, okay, well.
I mean, I think it's great that y'all are restoring as much as you can, I know when we moved Aunt Fanny's Cabin down here, we spent a lot of money trying to restore it back to its original, and it cost us more than we thought. When we got ready to do Bronner Hall, I think we did the best job we could for a structure that was built in 1910, but it's not exactly, you know, but we did, and I think they did a good job, and also the Taylor Bronner House. Group of citizens got together, and they said, we'll restore it, and then we'll turn, give the keys to you, and they did, so. I mean, I'm looking forward to seeing the work that you've done up there and being a good corporate citizen and also living up there, so I'm excited about it.
We appreciate it, we'll have a grand opening when we get finished up with.
Okay, thank you.
Wonderful.
Ms. Blackman.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, well, with that, I am going to move that we approve item 4C, 2019-170, zoning request for Z19-009, rezoning from LI to MU for the use- rezoning from LI to MU for the use of the property as residence and an antique restoration business. One point two-two acres, landlot four nine two, at twenty-two oh one Dixie Avenue, Gordon and D, N?
Deanie.
Deanie. Deanie Brands.
Motion second to approve this zoning request. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved six-zero. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Item five, previous licenses, we have none. Item six is formal business A, twenty nineteen dash two one three's approval of Ward three appointment to the Keeps Smyrna Beautiful Board, Leonard Robinson, to fulfill the term to expire December twenty nineteen. I'll turn that right over to Ms. Marilyn Blackman.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor, I am going to, Mr. Robinson's here, and he is definitely, um, somebody in the community that's, uh, very concerned about our community, especially as it relates to Keeps Smyrna Beautiful and making sure that the anesthetic, the aesthetics of our community looks well. So I think he'll be an asset to, uh, the KSB Board. And so with that, I move for approval of two zero one nine dash two one three, approval of Ward three appointment to Keeps Smyrna Beautiful Board, Leonard Robinson, to fulfill term to expire December two zero one nine.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved six-zero. Item six B, formal business is twenty nineteen dash one ninety-two, public hearing, authorization apartment name change request, twenty nineteen dash one ninety-two, twenty eighty-five Lake Park Drive Southeast. Name change from Village at Lake Park, DBA Village at Lake Park to Village at Lake Park, DBA Cortlandt at the Village with Carmen Garrison as the agent. Is there any chance, Ms. How, okay, you are here, okay. Uh, you want to give us the background on that, uh, Ms. Jones?
Village at Lake Park located at two zero eight five Lake Park Drive Southeast with Carmen Garrison as agent, has recently decided to change the name of the apartment complex to Cortlandt at the Village. The proper name change application has been reviewed and approved by the Fire Marshal, Building Inspector, City Engineer, nine-one-one Communications, City Marshals, as well as reported to the Business License Officer. Staff recommends approval of the name change from Village at Lake Park to Cortlandt at the Village.
Uh, the agency, would you please, please step forward, ma'am? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to, or that would like to make any public comment concerning this, uh, apartment name change? Okay, let the record show there is none. This is in Ms. Bluestein's district. Ms. Bluestein.
I saw the picture of your, uh, sign. It looks very nice. It really does. I think it will add, add a little color and all, and, um, interest when you're driving down forty-one.
Agreed.
So, anyway, so far it's gone pretty good?
Yes.
Good. Good. Okay, well then, if, uh, there's no one that's in objection, I will, at this time.
Can we change the name? Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Prove twenty nineteen dash one ninety-two, the authorization apartment name change request, twenty nineteen one ninety-two, located at twenty eighty-five Lake Park Drive Southeast. The name change from the Village at Lake Park doing businesses of the Village at Lake Park to the Village at Lake Park doing business at Cortlandt and the Village with Carmen Garrison as agent.
Motion second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Marilyn, Ms. Blackman. Well, somebody, that's approved six-zero. See, that wasn't too bad, was it?
It wasn't. That was easy.
Thank you.
That was quick.
Thank you very much.
Good. Thank you. Item C under formal business is twenty nineteen dash two zero eight, approval of extended work hours for Balfour Beatty for grading work for King Springs Elementary School. Nine point four-six acres, landlot four seventy-nine, ten forty-one Reed Road, Balfour Beatty. Proposed new work hours are seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Saturday, from June eighteenth, twenty nineteen, to August the third, twenty nineteen. Ms. Jones, the background on that, please.
Balfour Beatty, the general contractor for the construction of King Springs Elementary School, is requesting an extension of normal work hours for the completion of a large percentage of site work prior to the start of the new school year. The request is to extend work hours by one hour per day, Monday through Friday, and three hours per day on Saturdays. The proposed work hours would amount to eight additional work hours per week. The proposed new work hours would be seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Saturday, and from June eighteenth through, uh, August third. The proposed working hours would provide for five additional working days during that time. The request, um, as currently, um, actually is, is, our staff recommends that the work hours go from seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Friday, and, uh, Saturday, nine AM to seven PM, from June eighteenth through August the third, for site work, utility installation, and parking lot extension. And again, that is staff's recommendation.
Is there someone here from Balfour Beatty? You, if you want to just step forward and, um, identify yourself and.
Hi, I'm Anna Maria Toroco, and I'm the Senior Project Manager for this project with Balfour Beatty.
So it's, I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Welch and, uh, let him go from there.
Thank you. Um, in, in general terms, I feel pretty comfortable with this, um, recommendation, except for the Saturday. Or is that something that y'all can live with if we go from nine to seven on Saturday?
I mean, we're glad that you're listening to us, and if we could get nine to seven, that would be okay. Yes. We just had some rain, and we just want to make sure that we are complete with the work.
Only question I have. Uh, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a, a recommendation for approval to extend work hours for Balfour Beatty for grading work, King Springs Elementary School, nine point four-six acres, landlot four seventy-nine, ten forty-one Reed Road, Balfour Beatty. Proposed new hours from seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Friday, and nine AM until seven PM on Saturday, beginning, uh, June the eighteenth, extending through August the third.
Motion second to approve those extended hours. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved six-zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item D under formal business, twenty nineteen dash two eleven, authorization of a contract amendment with Booty Tree Inc., twenty-one forty-four Bolton Road, Northwest Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three one eight, to increase the hourly rate from seventy-five dollars to one hundred dollars an hour for the Arborous and Landscape Consultant Services, City of Smyrna. Ms. Jones, the background.
Booty Tree Incorporated has requested an hourly rate increase from seventy-five dollars to one hundred dollars per hour to cover increases in overhead costs and expenses, so they are requesting a contract amendment for Arborous and Landscape Consulting Services. The city has contracted with Booty Tree Incorporated, uh, since November tenth, twenty twelve, and this is the first increased request that we have received. The proposed contract amendment will run from July first, twenty nineteen, to July first, twenty twenty. Community Development recommends approval of the contract amendment.
Uh, Mr. Tim Goode, who chairs the Community Development Committee. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a question for Rusty. Make sure I pronounce it correctly. How do you pronounce the consultant's name?
Booty Tree.
Booty? Okay. Thank you. If there's no, uh, questions, just to mention one thing, the, the consultant's been working under the same rate since two thousand and twelve, and, uh, by all reports, does a, does an outstanding, uh, job for the city, providing arborist services, reviewing site plans, and, and helping our residents, so. Without any other questions, uh, with that, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve item four D, two thousand and nineteen dash two eleven, authorizing a contract amendment with Booty Tree Incorporated, two-one-four-four Bolton Road, Northwest Atlanta, Georgia, to increase hourly rate from seventy-five dollars an hour to a hundred dollars per hour for Arborous and Landscape Consulting Services, City of Smyrna.
Have a motion second, um, to, uh, approve this contract amendment. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved six-zero. Thank you very much. Uh, item E under formal business, twenty nineteen dash two zero three, approval of a consultant contract with Tindell Oliver, one thousand North Ashley Drive, Suite four hundred Tampa, Florida, three-three-six oh two, to conduct the Smyrna Transit Analysis and Feasibility Study allocated from the Atlanta Regional Commission, ARC, grant amount of three hundred thousand dollars for a total of three hundred and sixty-five thousand and twenty dollars, which includes city matching funds of twenty, of sixty-five thousand twenty dollars. FY nineteen, CIP, and authorize the mayor to execute all related documents. Um, Ms. Jones, the background, please.
The City of Smyrna requested qualifications and cost proposals for consultants to develop the Smyrna Transit Analysis and Feasibility Study. This project is partially funded by a grant from the Atlanta Regional Commission, ARC. Five firms submitted proposals, and the proposals were ranked by six evaluators. Following evaluation, uh, it was the cost. The team conducted interviews with the top three firms on May fifteenth. Based upon the results of the firms' proposals, qualifications, interviews, along with pricing submitted, it is the staff's team's recommendation to award to Tindell Oliver, who they feel is the most responsible and responsive bidder or proposal, in the amount of three hundred sixty-five thousand twenty dollars, and the city's match of sixty-five thousand twenty dollars, and authorize the mayor to execute, execute, pardon me, all related documents.
Uh, this is under Mr. Tim Goode's, um, chairmanship of the Community Relation, uh, Community Development Committee. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Rusty, would you mind just telling us a little bit, so folks know what the transit study is gonna include and what the folks would, what the consultant will look at, and the result we expect, or product we, you know, um, the reason, the, uh, product that we respect?
Yeah, this is a, this is a transit, transit feasibility study, so they're gonna look at, um, all modes of transit through this, through the city, and what is gonna be feasible for the city, and then lay out a potential master plan to move forward with, with providing transit through the city.
That's great. So this will, a study that'll help us, uh, understand what we want to do to tie into any other transportation systems, and, um, as that conversation moves forward in the region, how we want to.
They're gonna look at everything from Cobb County to individual systems, to the regional system. So it's not, it doesn't necessarily mean that we're gonna have our own transit system. It may be improvements to work with the county on their system, and then maybe supplement that with other systems to, to provide better service.
To give us recommendations on how to best tie into whatever is, is coming down the road.
On how to start that, and how much it's gonna cost to do, and all that.
Right, right. Thank you.
I, I just want to say, I mean, I, I appreciate the staff and their work that they have put into this to make this recommendation. I just wish there was a company, at least in Georgia, um, that would have stepped up, but these folks out of Tampa, Florida, I understand that, that they do a great job, so.
Yeah, I mean, as part, part of the, we had two, we had one local firm, and then we had one firm from Atlanta, and they were from, Tindell Oliver was from Tampa Bay, and it was, they had just had a much better presentation.
Well, and, and I'll tell you, I mean, there's a, a lot of work out there, so, uh, folks are, you know, they're, they're busy, so. Thank you, though. Uh, Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Without any other, uh, questions, uh, I move to approve item four E, two thousand and nineteen dash two oh three, approval of consulting contract with Tindell Oliver, thousand North Ashley Drive, Suite four hundred Tampa, Florida, to conduct the Smyrna Transit Analysis and Feasibility Study allocated from the Atlanta Regional Commission, grant amount of three hundred thousand dollars for a total of three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars and twenty dollars, which includes city matching funds of sixty-five thousand twenty dollars, fiscal year nineteen, CIP, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents.
Second.
Motion second to approve this consultant contract. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved six-zero. Thank you very much. Item F under formal business, twenty nineteen dash two one two, approval of a contract with Max Air Mechanical, eight fourteen Livingston Court, Marietta, Georgia, three zero zero six seven for HVAC preventative maintenance and repairs for city buildings for a three-year term with an option to renew annually and authorize the mayor to execute all related documents. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
The City of Smyrna has contracted with Johnson Controls since two thousand and four for heating, ventilation, and air conditioning preventive maintenance and repair for city buildings. Our public works staff recommended proposals from Johnson Controls, Sourcewell Cooperative, and Max Air Mechanical through the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance Cooperative. Staff found that Max Air Mechanical is the contracted vendor for Cobb County Government, and they are a participating vendor in the NCPA Alliance, Cooperative Purchasing Alliance. It is the recommendation of the Public Works Director and the Purchasing Manager to award the HVAC contract to Max Air Mechanical, Midwest Mechanical, for a three-year contract with option to renew each year in the amount of four hundred eighty-one thousand nine hundred thirty-six dollars, and authorize the mayor to execute all related documents.
Mr. Corky Welch, you chairs the Public Works Committee. Mr. Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'm gonna ask, uh, Jones, a, a question of Ms. Jones. Is there a cancellation clause in this contract by any chance?
Uh, the Johnson Controls?
No, with Max Air.
Frank, is there a const- cancellation clause? Yes, it is.
Just, just curious. I don't know if they really get to doing bad work. Uh, Mayor and Council, are there any other questions on the council? Hearing none, now make a motion to approval, to approve a contract with Max Air Mechanical, eight fourteen Livingston Court, Marietta, Georgia, three oh oh six seven for HVAC preventive maintenance and repair for city buildings for a three-year term with an option to renew annually and authorize the mayor to execute all related documents.
I'm motion second to approve this contract with Max Air Mechanical. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved six-zero. Thank you very much. Item G, uh, ordinance twenty nineteen dash eleven, approval to amend the City of Smyrna Code of Ordinances, Chapter ninety-eight, by adding section ninety-eight point four one, regulating storage and use of shareable, shareable mobility devices on public right-of-way. Uh, Ms. Jones, the background, please.
The city has a substantial interest in regulating how private operators of shareable mobility devices operate on the public right-of-way. Safety is our top priority, and one of the main reasons for this recommended ordinance. The general provisions of this new ordinance make it unlawful to provide or offer for use a shareable powerbo- power, powered mobility device anywhere within the city. It makes it unlawful to park, leave standing, leave lying, abandon, or otherwise place a shareable powered mobility device in a right-of-way or on public property anywhere within the city. It makes it unlawful to operate a shareable powered mobility device in a public right-of-way or on public property anywhere within the city. I think I repeated that again. The purposes of this ordinance, shareable powered mobility device means an electronic motorized or human-powered device that permits an individual user to move or be moved freely. Our neighboring city, Marietta, re- Our neighboring city, Marietta, recently enacted a similar ordinance. Our police chief and city staff recommends adoption of the ordinance.
Mr. Derek Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Several weeks ago, when this was brought up, and a ban was suggested, as Ms. Adler-Jones just articulated, I think a lot of us council members hadn't had an opportunity to really fully vet this, consider it, give it the attention that it needed. So rather than banning it that day, or putting it on that agenda, we decided to have staff do a little bit more research, look at what other cities have done, where have shareable mobility devices worked, where they haven't, if they're regulated, if they're not, and also allow time for citizen input. And I know, me personally, since this first came up, I've had three public meetings, two H O A meetings and a town hall, and the feedback, I've asked the question in each one, and the feedback that I've gotten is overwhelmingly, people do not want these devices in our right-of-way in Smyrna. I'd say ninety-five percent. Staff came back, including the police department, saying this is a safety issue, you know, if you consider these things that go twenty or twenty-five miles an hour downtown, think about our narrow sidewalks downtown, and the restaurants that are here, and some of those tables stick out, and people are walking, and it just would create some safety issues that I just don't think we're either ready for yet, or just may not suit Smyrna for these devices to be here generally. So I'm going to support the staff recommendation and the will of the citizens on this, and if there's no other discussion, does anybody want to make any comment? If I make a motion?
Let's go and get a motion in a second, then, Will.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion to approve item six-G, approval to amend the City of Smyrna Code of Ordinances, Chapter ninety-eight, by adding section ninety-eight dash forty-one, regulating storage and use of shareable mobility devices on public right-of-way.
Second. Motion is second. Any other discussion? Anyone?
I'd like, excuse me, I'll just make a comment. I'm, I'm not sure I'm opposed to each and every business model out there that might come to the city and want to put in these scooters or some other electronic device, but I haven't seen the business model. What I, what I don't want is devices running down the sidewalks at twenty-five miles an hour, unlicensed drivers, and leaving them everywhere around the city. I just, I'm not in favor of that. You know, in my own opinion, this is an ordinance that we're putting into place to force somebody that would like to bring such a device into Smyrna, to bring it before the city instead of just dropping them off downtown, and that's what's happening in other places. So with that, I'm going to support the ordinance as written tonight.
I do also support the ordinance as well, but Derek, I do want to ask, I've had several constituents reach out to me and ask, they've got personal scooters, so what we're doing here, it's not going to affect them having a, them owning their own personal scooter.
That's correct. If a citizen wants to purchase one on their own, they are able to do that, and this doesn't prevent them from doing that. And I'd say to Councilman Welch's point, you know, this is, this is something that if a, if a company came forward and had a plan that suited the city, that we could somehow incorporate shareable mobility devices, then I think this council would be willing to listen to something that, that worked here. So not to say that won't happen in the future.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Welch's point, too, I think as a libertarian, I don't like banning businesses, but I think this one is not a mature business for the regulatory environment that does yet not exist. So we need, if we do consider any type of option like this, we need to make sure we've prepared the public, and we've prepared the city for the elements that might be involved. I'm going to support this ordinance tonight.
And for myself, I do appreciate the staff's effort to evaluate the ordinance, see if there is some other alternatives out there besides a ban, because as we've said, you know, we're supportive of creative ways for the city to grow and provide services to our residents, but this is, seems to be the right, right approach right now with our infrastructure and feedback we receive from our residents, and with the safety in mind of the folks out there on the streets, so.
Anyone else? I'll just say that, I just returned from Denver, Colorado, on an unrelated business trip, and while I was there, I talked to folks in downtown Denver that, they just said one day, somebody dumped off, started dumping off these scooters, and they did not have an ordinance. Now they have a very well-designed ordinance that they had to sort of back into, is regulated extremely well. My concern is these vehicles will go up to twenty-five, thirty miles an hour, and that's pretty fast. And if it's on a straight, flat surface, it'd probably be okay, but our sidewalks are handicapped accessible, and oftentimes the level will drop off, and I will say this, somebody will be killed, I think, or could be killed. And I saw my first one that was abandoned today, up north of here, on Atlanta Road. I don't know where it came from, but it was one of the companies, it was just parked in the middle of the sidewalk, so I think this is a good move, and again, if we need to relook at it, we can look at it later, but these things fly, and in a downtown, or even, even on Concord Road and South Cobb, and I had initially said I was probably okay with South Cobb, and maybe Concord and Spring, but somebody going to get hurt bad, so, anyway. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Is there any other, Ms. Bruce?
Well, I want to say something before we vote on this. I'm not opposed, I'm not for. I can't, I think that, though, it's gotten to a point where we need to have people who are familiar with the device, and who know what they're doing when they get on it, rather than just jumping on it and say, whoopee. Because, you know, it really bothered me when that gentleman got killed a couple of weeks ago. I'm sure he didn't start, he didn't start out to end his life that day, but it turned out that way. So I think we just need to calm down and to see what the future brings, and if it works, if it, if like Derek said, if a company comes to us and is reasonable and everything, then we can be reasonable, too. So, thank you.
I think unfortunately, the way that, or fortunately, it's very simple, if you have an app on your cellphone, you go up to that apparatus scooter, whatever it is, and you check the power, you can check the power on the thing, see if it has enough power, then you can, you just put the app in, boom, and it's charged to your, to something in your phone. It has, you don't go through any instructions or any details about how to drive, you just, boom, you're ready to go, so. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved six-zero, thank you very much. Item H under formal business, ordinance twenty nineteen dash thirteen, approval, approve the amendment to the City of Smyrna Code of Ordinances, Chapter one-oh-two, adding Article five, water systems to include sections one-oh-two dash forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, and fifty-seven. These updates are to satisfy a mandatory requirement set forth by the Metropolitan North Georgia Water Planning District, M N G W P D, and Georgia Environmental Protection Agency, E P A, and request the mayor and the council's approval of updates to the Article five water system to include new sections in the city code of ordinances. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
Actually, what you said was what I was going to say.
Good, then Mr. Welch, you chair the Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any questions among council? Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendments to the City of Smyrna's Code of Ordinances, as previously read word for word by the mayor.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved six-zero, thank you very much. Item six-J, twenty nineteen, I'm sorry, item I, twenty nineteen dash-two-oh-four, award R F Q nineteen dash zero-two-one, water line installation, State Route two-eighty to the lowest bidder, K M Davis Contracting Company, Inc., thirty-two fifty-nine Ostel Road, Marietta, Georgia, three-zero-zero-zero-eight, for three-hundred-seventy-seven-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-five dollars, from Water C I P, and authorize the mayor to execute all related documents. We'll turn that right over to Mr. Welch again. Is that okay, Ms. Jones?
That's correct, yes, that's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Frank, do you have anything you want to bring forth on this item, or is it straightforward? Thank you, sir. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation to award item two-oh-one-nine dash two-oh-four, award R F Q one-nine dash zero-two-one, water line installation, State Route two-eighty to the lowest bidder, K M Davis Contracting Company Incorporated, thirty-two fifty-nine Ostel Road, Marietta, Georgia, three-zero-zero-zero-eight, for three-hundred-seventy-seven-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-five dollars, from the Water Capital Improvements Plan, and authorize the mayor to execute all related documents.
Second.
I got motion a second to award this water line installation. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved six-zero, thank you very much. Item J, twenty nineteen dash one-ninety-eight, award R F Q nineteen dash zero-two-zero, dirty lane storm drainage rehabilitation, to the lowest bidder, Tabby Company, L L C, P O Box two-seventy-six, New Bern, Tennessee, three-eight-zero-five-nine, for the amount of one-hundred-ninety-nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety dollars and fifteen cents, from Stormwater Fund, and authorize the mayor to execute all related documents. Let Mr. Welch have that again. Mr. Welch. Ms. Jones, it's getting out easy tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, any, anything, Frank, you need to bring forth on this? Hearing none, any other questions to the council? With that, I make a motion to approve item two-zero-one-nine dash one-nine-eight, order R F Q nineteen zero-two-zero, dirty lane storm drainage rehabilitation to the lowest bidder, Tabby Company, L L C, P O Box two-seventy-six, New Bern, Tennessee, three-eight-zero-five-nine, for the amount of one-hundred-ninety-nine, one-hundred-ninety-nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety dollars fifteen cents, from Stormwater Fund, and authorize the mayor to execute all related documents.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved six-zero. Item seven is commercial building permits, we have none. Item eight is consent agenda. Ms. Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
Pardon me, the consent agenda reads as follows. Item A, approval of the June third, twenty nineteen, mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the June third, twenty nineteen, pre-council meeting minutes. Item C, approval of the May thirtieth, twenty nineteen, committee of the whole meeting minutes. And item D is a fiscal year twenty nineteen budget amendment, that's actually in the amount of nine-thousand-seven-hundred-seventy-one dollars and eighty-six cents for our I T department.
I hear motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor of the motion? It's approved six-zero. Committee reports, we'll start tonight with, start with Mr. Ron Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to congratulate the team in the city, the finance team. I know we've caught our breath a little bit now, and we have this one minor amendment, but as I stated that night, we'll continue to evaluate and tweak the operating budget of the city, and make sure that your taxpayer dollars are protected and maximized. I do want to congratulate the Smyrna Blue under twelve baseball team. They played in the state championship this weekend, unfortunately came a little short, but they're to be congratulated for the, another stellar year of hard work from that team. I also want to announce that the Sunday, the twenty-third, Riverview Landing is having a Hard Hat V I P Tour, sneak peek of the Eddie down on the river. So if you want to come by, you can go to the Riverview Landing Facebook page and check it out, and go down there and check out the newest part of Smyrna on the river. It's a project well in development, and you'll be pleased with what you see, I hope. All right, with that, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Tim Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick congratulations to our new assistant city engineer, who just left a moment ago, Ashley White. Very fortunate to have her. I'm sure Kevin Moore is appreciative of the, of the help. He's been very busy, and it's great to have Ashley on the team with us. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank the local Masonic Lodge and one of the local Boy Scout troops. This past Monday night, I had the unique privilege of attending a flag retirement ceremony, and the first time I've ever done that, but if you ever get an opportunity, it's very moving, and it very much worthwhile, if you, if you ever get a chance to go, it'll be something you'll never forget. That I yield.
Ms. Marilyn Black.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to also say congratulations or welcome to our new assistant city engineer, Ashley White. I think she's, again, going to be an added asset for the, for the team. And also want to send out a big congratulations, I just found this out the other day, that one of Smyrna's very own is, he's a teacher at Smyrna Elementary. Mr. Jason York was the teacher of the year at Smyrna Elementary, so I want to say congratulations to Jason. Thank you for the service that you provide for those students at Smyrna Elementary, and he's, he's the fifth grade teacher over there. So I want to say congratulations to him for that. And then also, earlier in the week, I had an opportunity to, or last week, I should say, opportunity to, one of our constituents invited me to the Philippine Independence Day celebration, and it was absolutely wonderful. So thank you for that invitation, and I appreciate it. Arjo is her name, so I appreciate it. And with that, I yield.
Ms. Andrea Bruce.
You know, it was, the weather was so great last week, you felt like doing stuff outside or whatever, walking, and then I got up this morning, and all of a sudden, the heat was like here again. So, welcome to Atlanta, welcome to summer. Anyway, that's all, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Derek Norton.
No report this evening, Your Honor, thank you.
Ms. Jones.
I just wanted to express condolences to Kay Bowlec, our H R director. Her mother passed away, so please keep Kay's family in your thoughts and prayers.
Mr. Scott Andrews. Scott Cochran. Terry Graham. Tina. Before we, we don't have a show call, so, I do just want to mention that for the first time, and my gosh, I don't know that we've ever had a water break in this county that created us to have a boil water advisory, and that happened Tuesday. I think most folks, I hope, understood, and we got the message out as best we could. We've got some new ways that we're looking at to let the public know, but that line broke, I want to say, at five, six o'clock in the morning, I think, on Tuesday. It was repaired, but today it had a water authority meeting, and the director, who's been there for thirty-two years, says he has never known us to have a boil water advisory. E P D, actually, was the one that issued that to all the residents of Smyrna, so we're working on a better way, I think, to get the message out. Very difficult to get it out to everybody at the same time, but I think we're working on a solution, so. Citizens' input is item eleven, Leonard Robinson, eighteen oh-nine, Teasley Drive, Southeast
Mr. Mayor, City Council, staff, first I want to say thank you for the appointment to keep Smyrna beautiful. I really appreciate it, I, you know, I love Smyrna, and I want to be a part of it. So my first official act, Terry, can we have two sides? So my first official act, Terry, can we have two-sided agendas for the city council meetings instead of one-sided? Oh, okay, okay, I'm effective already.
Yeah, mine's two-sided.
Mine's one-sided, okay. Well, anyway, I received some, let me see, interesting news this week. In a dialogue with Keep Smyrna Beautiful, I was, I heard that a new department called Department of Environmental Sustainability was being created and set up to start July 1st. Wow, you know, hmm. I figured, okay, what am I missing? So I said, can Keep Smyrna, I mean, can Sustainable Smyrna get engaged? I didn't like the tone of the response, but maybe it's just me. So when I asked my city council representative, council member Blackburn about it, she didn't know about this, there's a group of us, up to about 30 people, have been meeting every month for a year, at our own time, very talented, passionate citizens, about Sustainable Smyrna and sustainability. And we have a Facebook group page called Sustainable Smyrna. So imagine our surprise when something's going forward with the city, and we knew nothing about it. Not that we want to control anything, but we want to participate, we need a forum to participate. You know, we have some members here that will probably comment later. So, anyway, but the good news is, I'm going to meet tomorrow with Keep Smyrna Beautiful and staff, and we're going to have something out, and I just respectfully request to report the meeting to Councilmember Blackburn after we, after we meet, to see what we come up with. Again, you've got a bunch of citizens that really, really want to get engaged. So, anyway, here's what the request is, transparency of the sustainability process in Smyrna. We'd really like that to be an open, open process. We'd like Sustainable Smyrna to be recognized as a city advisory committee. You have talented, passionate people from all walks of life that want to engage. We've had state reps that attend our meeting, a few city council members have attended the meeting, we've had corporate people, Tiss and Cruck, they attended the meeting because they like what we do. Sustainable Smyrna's been recognized by the NFL, it's been recognized by the Climate Reality Project under former Vice President Al Gore. Everybody's recognizing us, except the City of Smyrna, so we ask that. And then we also ask to be part of the sustainability process in Smyrna. Again, meeting with Keep Smyrna Beautiful tomorrow, hopefully we can come up with something that's workable, when you have a bunch of citizens that want to do this on their own time. You know, again, this is the government of the people, by the people, and for the people, and we are the people. Thank you very much for your time.
Jenny Barti, 4094 Laurel Springs Way, Smyrna, Sustainability is her topic.
Hi, my name is Barti, Jenny Barti, and I've lived here since 2003, and I've been very involved in Keep Smyrna Beautiful. I've volunteered since I've lived here, probably at least a couple times a year, every year, and it's a great program. I love Smyrna, too. I am very passionate about Smyrna, and I have, and Keep Smyrna Beautiful is a great organization, and I've had my friends, and I've had other folks help me with litter cleanups, with the recycling at the festivals that we have, at the Christmas tree recycling, and other activities. And, you know, I've worked with Ann Kirk, and now Janet Lieberman, so I just hope that we can, Sustainable Smyrna can be, can collaborate better. We're not, we want to work together because the environment is what we all care about, and we all need to take better care of. So I'm just hoping that we can all get along and work together. So I also just wanted to talk a little bit about, about a couple other issues, if you don't mind, related to sustainability. I play tennis, and I play weekly, I play at the tallest in tennis courts, and Smyrna does such a great job of maintaining the tennis courts. I did notice, though, when I went to Rhine Park, which is not such a nice park, and it's run by Cop County, it's not as well-maintained, I don't think, but, but I noticed the lights, they have these great LED lights that are fabulous, and those just recently came, I was shocked to see those. The lights at the Smyrna tennis court, it is hot, you can feel that heat, you feel that energy that's being wasted by those lights. So I encourage, you know, get better lighting, and I know that at a Sustainable Smyrna meeting, we had a lighting group, a local Smyrna lighting group, that came and talked to us, and we are, and they just sound fabulous, they're environmentally friendly, so we want to see if Smyrna could start using their services, because they're, they're doing stuff all over the country, I think, and, you know, take from our local. And I was also just going to talk a little bit about trash and recycling. When I first moved here, I was so excited because they had citywide curbside recycling, and that's great, but that, that's been there for a long time. Unfortunately, a lot of people don't recycle, I see, but I have a little trash can. I got, you know, there's two sizes, and I took the smaller one, and I only throw out trash like once every two or three weeks. And I always put my recycling out, but I kind of feel like we should encourage people to throw away less, less trash, and an incentive would be charging people more for having a larger container. If people would get a smaller container, they could pay less. We could have some incentive toward getting people to, to not trash as much. And we do have another person in Sustainable Smyrna that is somebody who works for the City of Atlanta, actually, and helps with their recycling program. And she, she said in Pittsburgh, she was impressed because when there was a festival she went to, and they have a trash can, they have recycling, and they have compost. And, you know, there's, food waste is a huge problem. We throw away food, and it creates this methane gas, and it's just horrible. So maybe Smyrna could be, you know, on the cutting edge and try, you know, having, having compost bins, having more compost available. I think I may, may have gone over my, my limit, but thank you all very much.
Pat Burns, 10 Concord Road, Southwest, Smyrna, Georgia 30082, Sustainability.
My name is Pat Burns, I've lived in Smyrna for 30 years. When individuals come before the city council, it's not on a whim. Sustainability is not a whim. For months, Leonard Robinson has come to these chambers to share his interest in sustainability, a serious subject from a man who is willing to put in time, energy, and experience towards making Smyrna a leader for the sustainability concept. Some of you have seen at his meetings, but there's always been a void. No Smyrna Clean and Beautiful 15 Board Members or its directors have attended any of the sustainability meetings, from my knowledge. Surely, the three of you who were on the Clean and Beautiful Committee could have seen how to make a stronger Smyrna presence in sustainability by linking and introducing Mr. Robinson to Clean and Beautiful, and vice versa. It was disingenuous of the city to ignore Mr. Robinson's comments and move on with the Clean and Beautiful to become branded as sustainable, thereby apparently overlooking Mr. Robinson's energy and willingness to make the Smyrna, to make the city better. Fortunately, I just learned as I came into the meeting that there will be a, a meeting tomorrow between Mr. Robinson and Clean and Beautiful. Therefore, with your support, I look forward to Smyrna becoming a leading sustainability city.
That's the last speaker. Is there any other comments that folks would like to make?
Look forward to meeting with you tomorrow, Leonard.
I will say this, that we have talked about changing, or changing that department's name for about six months. Ms. Jones, I don't recall exactly what the name was, was it Environmental?
It was Department of Environmental Services, and we first mentioned it, I believe it was at a committee meeting for the KSB Council Committee, that's when the staff brought the recommendation, and then we also mentioned it at a work session as well. So the information has been out there.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the word sustainability has been in their charge at KSB from the beginning.
Yep, it's in the charter of the City of Smyrna, so. Okay. If there's no other biz to be brought for this body, I declare this meeting adjourned at 8:20.